I call to order the city council meeting of November 2nd, 2016. The first item will be a pledge of allegiance. Tonight that will be led by Justice Orsi.
If everybody could stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Justice. Tonight we have two presentations. One proclaiming November 1st, 2016 as Extra Mile Day. That will be done by Kim Wells. And then the recognition of two that rendered assistance to Western Police Action. That will be done by Chief Diamond. So if the council would step down, I'd like to recognize this time.
Each year, the city of West Jordan joins with other cities across the nation to recognize individuals who create positive change in our community through their extra mile efforts and volunteerism and service. We recognize that one good deed makes a difference. West Jordan is once again participating in this nationwide movement and has proclaimed November 1st, 2016 as Extra Mile Day. Mayor and council, I'd like to present a few individuals who go the extra mile and give back to our community, both personally and professionally. Mayor, if you can come help me. Al Richards, if you'll come forward. Al Richards is always smiling and giving back to the community, whether it's through volunteer service on a city committee like the Healthy West Jordan Committee, or the Western Stampede Committee, or raising money for the police department's peer support program. Al is willing to give his time and talents for a good cause. He also serves as the Chamber of Commerce's member relations ambassador and is a great asset to our business community. Melissa Worthing, come on up. In both her personal and professional lives, Melissa Worthing looks for ways to strengthen the community. She is the driving force behind the City Journal's Community Foundation, spearheads the annual spelling bee, serves as the liaison with mascots for miracles, helps with a fundraiser for the rape recovery center, helps coordinate the Pumpkin Palooza event, serves on the Chamber of Commerce's Women in Business Council, and much more. Melissa goes the extra mile and our community is better because of it. Thank you, Melissa. Jen Campbell. Jen Campbell recently served as the president of the West Jordan Exchange Club, where they focus on child abuse prevention, patriotism, and instilling community pride. Under her direction, they raised funds for the Children's Justice Center and also partnered with Danan to provide scholarships to local students who had excelled in the face of adversity. She is the director of South Valley Services, a domestic violence shelter that provides safe shelter, resource and referral services, and self-sufficiency programs for domestic violence victims. She has helped open two community resource centers in West Jordan City Hall and Riverton, and works continually to strengthen the relationship between South Valley Services and law enforcement. Thank you, Jen. Bonnie Hutchings. Bonnie is one of the original members of the Volunteers in Police Service Program. She joined the newly organized unit in July of 2008 and splits her volunteer time between the victim advocate unit and the police department. As a victim advocate, Bonnie helps those in crisis get the help they need. She has also worked in the warrants unit, assisted the training department with various assignments, including new hire training assessments, participated in SWAT scenarios, and assisted with the Citizen Police Academy. Bonnie has a positive attitude, a willingness to help, and a very compassionate spirit. Thank you, Bonnie. Craig Daring. On the list of individuals who've given of themselves in service to our city, Craig Daring would certainly be right at the top. Craig has devoted more than 40 years to our community. He founded the Chamber of Commerce in 1986 and served as president until 2014. He formed the West Jordan Rotary Club in 1987 and was instrumental in starting the West Jordan Exchange Club in 2003, and he is still an active member in both of these organizations today. Over the years, Craig has served on many committees, boards, and organizations.
went the extra mile, did some things that they didn't have to do to help one of our
He's helped chair city events and community improvement projects.
police officers.
Craig has not just served our city, he's been an integral part in shaping it and guiding
So if I can have Omani and Pamela come up.
its progress, while championing the ideal that no matter how large we grow, we will
On, I'll start reading this as they come up here.
always be the home of the good neighbor. Thank you, Craig.
If you guys will just stand right here for me. On October 6th, 2016, Officer Behunin was investigating a theft report at Omani and Pamela Nantoli, sorry, Nantoli, I got it right, I think. Right? Okay, close. They were, he was at their house investigating the theft when the suspect returned. He started to interrogate or talk to the suspect. When he unprovoked was attacked and the suspect started punching and hitting Officer Behunin. Officer Behunin received several injuries, including a concussion and some injuries to his head and face. Subsequent, or during the unprovoked attack, Officer Behunin was knocked to the ground and physically struggled against his attacker, while Omani physically started to intervene, preventing the suspect from gaining superiority over Officer Behunin. Omani was able to prevent further injury to Officer Behunin during which he himself was being physically attacked by the suspect. During his intervention, he was able to finally restrain the suspect to prevent him from serious injury. Omani held off the attack until Officer Behunin was able to deploy his taser and OC spray against the subject. Omani then physically restrained the suspect with the assistance of his wife Pamela, who also placed herself in jeopardy, until Officer Behunin and an arriving officer, Officer Elyson, came and were able to get the suspect in handcuffs. Neither Omani or Pamela were required to intervene to prevent the suspect from injuring Officer Behunin. However, of their own accord, they did intervene, placing themselves in harm's way, preventing a violent attack from evolving into something far worse than it already was. With the current tone in the nation facing, that face police officers being attacked daily, and so many citizens standing by watching those attacks go unchecked, it is uplifting to know that citizens such as Omani and Pamela would not stand by and allow a violent attack against one of our officers to continue. The added revelation that these two would intervene, putting themselves in harm's way to protect this officer fills me and our department with emotion beyond express, beyond expression. Their resolve to intervene without question cannot go unnoticed. And so we're going to award them this meritorious service award for them helping our officer and preventing any further injuries. I'm going to go ahead and ask, just so we can get a picture all together here. Officer Behunin is here. He's looking much better than he was that night. He is back to full duty and serving very well. So Omani, or Pamela, if we can have you come up here and we'll just take a picture with all of us real quick here.
We really do appreciate your contribution to our community. We'll move now to communications. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. You know, said Jamie is here tonight. Melanie sustained an injury while hunting, rather serious, so she'll be out for a little while, but I'll keep you informed as to what her status is. A second, we need to start planning for the retreat coming up, and what we'd like to do is actually solve some problems during that. And so if you have any things that we'd like to talk about, we'll be prepared for that. Like, should we have another water survey, or should we, you know, do something with the, some of the other fees that we have, or how are we going to pay for a building, that kind of stuff. So if you have any suggestions, get back with me on that. Thank you, Mayor.
City attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to add tonight. Thanks.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Frank Lang.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Bill Tiger.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Wenda.
Just one item. We wanted to let you know that we're having an e-waste and shredding event this coming Saturday. It will be here in the parking lot, the City Hall parking lot, start at 10:00 a.m. and go until noon. The next one that we'll have will actually be February 4th, so encourage everybody to come and dispose of their electronics. We've been working with Kim Wells on advertising this, so it's out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief McReith.
Just one item. You might have saw on KSL's noon news yesterday, they invited our department along with another department to have another chili cook-off event. Happy to say that firefighter Matt Birch and Sherri Rosequist attended. We won. And one of the prizes, if you will, that they were giving was a suite to a hockey game. In turn, we have donated that to a West Jordan family of a child named Nathan. You might have seen him in the news. He suffers from brittle bone disease. We're donating that to his family so that they can all go to the hockey game. And he just got released from the hospital, actually, from having some major surgeries. So it was a neat event and good to still have the championship for best children.
Awesome. Chief. Chief Diamond.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, just want to let you know that we are currently have a list out for police officers, both recruit police officers, those that have not gone through an academy, and those that have gone through an academy and have experience. So if you know somebody that would qualify and you think would be an asset to our police department, please encourage them to apply. We also are finished, tomorrow, we'll be finishing up what we call the Virchah Training. It's a 300-degree simulator to make decision-making on shoot-don't-shoot type situations. And every officer, as of tomorrow, will have gone through that training within our police department. So we've got that done in about the past three months to take that. Officers spend about four hours down in that simulator, making decisions, and then going over the decisions that they made. That simulator was purchased by the Attorney General's Office, and we've used that simulator to do that. It's free of charge to us, but it's a great piece, a great piece of equipment, great training. With that being said, and the other incident that we just had, and talking about officers being attacked today, it's unfortunate that I will tell you that we had an officer involved in a shooting today. You know, robbery suspect was shot and killed. It is still under investigation. This happened only a few hours ago, and so we are still investigating that, and we'll provide you more details when we can. The officer is fine, the suspect is deceased.
Thank you, Chief. Council. Councilor Rice.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, I'll be stepping down from the West Jordan City Council, and this is my last city council meeting. I want to share my love and express my appreciation for the voices and votes of confidence that I received during my time here. I had the opportunity to live in West Jordan longer than I have lived anywhere else in my entire life, and I fully expected to have this be my forever home. I've made lifelong friends here and will miss living and working here. Thank you for the incredible memories. There are many good people in West Jordan and some truly exceptional staff members working for this city. The reason for my departure is that I'm moving. My family has the opportunity to live another dream, and we simply couldn't pass up the opportunity. But before I go, I wanted to express my love and say thank you, and wish everyone the best.
Thank you. House member Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo what councilmember Rice just said, it has been a pleasure to serve with you. I met Sophie when she was running for mayor, and I was running for council, and then we served together on the planning commission for over a year, I think, until she bolted to become a city council member. And then we've served together here, of course, for the last 10 months or so. And it's been, I can honestly say it's been a pleasure, and you will be missed. And I also wanted to mention support and appreciation for our police officers, especially the lights of today's events. If there's anything that the council can do, or we can, or I can do, please let us know. Thanks.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to defer my comments. I was, Sophie got it. I'll defer my comments later in the meeting. Also, thanks, Chief, for the update on the police department. We are always grateful for what our public safety individuals in all departments in the city do for us. Very grateful. Thank you.
Councilmember Haga.
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind everybody about our tree planting project happening this Saturday at 8 o'clock, and we've got council fixing breakfast for you, so if you come show up, you know it'll be the top breakfast, and we'll get the trees replaced that got damaged from the vandalism. Also, last Saturday, I held a town hall meeting over at Vista West Park in discussion of some of the improvements that the city has been and is doing on that park. And we had a wonderful turnout, probably around 40 people, to discuss some of the things we wanted to be doing. And one of the major things that we're getting ready to do is removing the cottonwood trees there and putting in some nicer trees. We'll be taking out 13 trees and putting in 30, Brian, 30 trees. So helping make that park even nicer park. And then Sophie, I wish you the best of luck, and if you're in town on a Wednesday night, help yourself and visit. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items tonight. First of all, my gratitude and appreciation for councilmember Rice and her service here. You'll definitely be missed, and just thank you. Second item, this last week, I found myself in Medford, Oregon, and something that stuck out to me that was a little bit different about that city is that some of the busier intersections where you expect to see panhandling, there was none. Instead, there was a sign stating that it was against city code for pedestrians to receive property or objects from people within vehicles. I thought that was an interesting approach to trying to deal with panhandling. So I've emailed to everybody, Medford city code that they've adopted that seems to be rather effective. And if there's no objection from the council, I would like to direct staff to look into the viability of doing something similar to West Jordan to help stem some of the problems that we have around Jordan Land and Bangor and some of these other places before it becomes too much of an issue. Would there be any objection to giving staff direction to look into that and bring us back our report?
Any objection?
Thank you. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted to report that the Western Growth Executive Committee met on Monday morning at 10:00 here at West Jordan City Hall, and there is a meeting on November 14th at 11:30 in the community room to discuss pertinent items for the Western Growth. 11:30. All mayors were present with the exception of one on the western side, and we expect a big turnout that morning. So if you can come, please be there. Be some big decisions made. Citizens' comments. I have one signed up to speak. Steve, did you want to speak during the public hearing? Okay. That's all that has signed up. Anyone wishing to speak during citizens' comments now would be the time. I will close citizens' comments and move to the consent calendar. Discussion and our motion. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent calendar item, page 8 through 8E.
Motion by councilmember Jacob and a second by councilmember Rice. Discussion the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Mayor Rolf.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Haga.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
And councilmember Rice. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Item 7A, public hearing. Receive public input regarding agenda business items 8A through 8E, amending the uniform fee schedule for fiscal year 2016-2017, updating the water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste, and impact fees. Bill.
Steve Lang is here with a presentation and has brought to discussion regarding this item.
Steve.
Thank you, Bill. This public hearing has two parts, utility rates and impact fees. I just have a brief presentation, an overview on both of those subjects, and then I assume we can talk in more detail if you want during the business items. Let's talk first about the impact fees. I just have one slide here. Might be a little bit hard to see the numbers, but I can summarize them for you. Our current impact fees are at the top and new proposed fees down below. The new fees have more categories because we intentionally created those categories in order to create some fees that were a little bit more specific and more fair to certain types of commercial businesses. Overall, total fees are going up slightly. If you added up all seven categories, you would see about a 10% increase. For example, if you looked at the single-family homes, if you added all of the numbers across the top line, in the current fees, you'd come up with about $10,700 for a typical home. Under the new fees, you'd come up with about $11,700, about $1,000 more per home. You'll also notice that some of the fees are actually going down. The fire is going down, transportation is going down, and that's simply because the capital projects, construction projects related to those categories are at a lower level in the next six years than they were previously. And of course, those can change in the future, but our current construction plan has lower dollar amounts in those categories. In order to adopt the new fees, the city needs to go through three main steps. The first step, you've already completed three weeks ago. This council adopted the impact fee study on October 12th, which was written by our consultant, Tishler Weiss. The next step is tonight, if council chooses to do so, to adjust the fee schedule, to adopt these new numbers into the fee schedule. The third step would come in two weeks when we amend the municipal code, which takes a little bit more work, and that's why we need the extra time to do that. But that would be the third step. Our deputy city attorney has explained to me that the new fees can be implemented no sooner than January 12th, which is 90 days after the adoption of the impact fee study. That's all I have to present. Are there any questions at this time?
Questions for council? Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. If we change as part of the fees, not the others, that means the fees we don't change will continue to change the same rate because it doesn't change. The only change we'll tap on January would be the new schedule. Is that correct?
I assume council can choose to adopt any or all of the fees.
Right, we can pick and choose, I would suppose.
That's right. My understanding is that these are the maximum legally justifiable fees, since they've been calculated through the fee study done by the consultant. But the city can choose to implement anything lower than these numbers if it wants to.
Thank you. Even though, for example, on our stormwater, we just recently changed that one. So that's a higher fee already, and then this new, new impact fee is going to increase again. Is that correct?
You might be thinking about the monthly utility fees for utility customers. These are impact fees that are charged to the developers when new properties are developed.
You're right. I was mixing those. Thank you.
Councilmember Haga.
Thanks, Mayor. This is the first time I'm seeing this, so I was looking at the agenda online. Now, from my perspective, because we voted on these things quite a bit, the public hearing was to adopt a fee schedule. And the business items that are on the meeting tonight, do they have anything to do with this public hearing? That would be the first question.
Well, certainly, they're connected. And I understand that after those business items, the next business item actually is an opportunity to adopt the fee schedule. This is the public hearing before we adopt the fee schedule.
So that's my question to the city attorney. If we do not have a published schedule, is this really a true hearing on a SFP schedule? That would be the first question.
Well, certainly, they're connected. And I understand that after those business items, the next business item actually is an opportunity to adopt the fee schedule. This is the public hearing before we adopt the fee schedule.
So, that was my question to the city attorney. If we do not have a published schedule, is this really a true hearing on a speed schedule? Because it's not in the packet at this time.
I believe it is in the packet.
Maybe it's on the amended version.
It's after the utilities.
With the changes that are proposed tonight or prior to tonight?
There's lots of yellow highlighting of the fee schedule. The highlighted items are the items that are being proposed for changes.
Then, last question. Could I get a copy? So, when we have the public hearing, I know what we're listening to. Thank you.
This is the public hearing. We'll be acting on whether or not they are approved during item E in the agenda. We're not voting on anything now. We're just holding the public hearing at this point in time. So, I think you'll find everything you're asking for in item E. Other question?
Thanks, Steve.
Sure.
I will now open the public hearing for item seven A. If you're here to speak on item seven A, now would be the time. We have Steve. Yes.
We'd like to go through all the slides first and then open it up if that's okay. It'll be faster.
Okay, let's do it. Please, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. So, regarding utility rates, here's a summary of the proposed rate changes. The difference that you'll see tonight compared to previous proposals is a two-phased plan. We're recommending a partial increase in rates December first this year and the second phase July first next year. If you look closely at the numbers, you'll see that it's basically the full amount that was recommended several months ago divided into half now, half later, plus a slight addition to the first phase, which would help fund a public works building bond payment spread across all of the utility funds. You'll notice that solid waste, the four point nine percent, has already been implemented. And that was October first. And of course, it would have a phase two also on July first. And we're recommending zero changes for streetlights at this time. If you'd like to see how that would impact the average residential utility bill, here are some numbers. The current, the first phase, and the second phase. You can see the totals at the bottom increasing from about eighty dollars to eighty-seven dollars and then ninety-four dollars about a year from now. We have more details on each of the utilities. I don't know if you'd like to see those now, the charts. Okay. These are in your packet, just as a reminder. We have two scenarios for each utility. Water, this scenario shows no rate changes and no public works bond payments. So, if we did nothing, this is what we are projecting will happen. If you follow the blue line, our revenues will be almost flat except for a little bit of population growth. And as you can see, that revenue line is well below the expense line that we're projecting. With the two-phase changes that we're recommending tonight, you'll see that the revenue line is much closer and it meets the expense line within the next couple of years. The shaded areas, one hundred percent reserves and fifty percent reserves are just some benchmarks that you can look at. If you look at the dark green bars, that represents our estimated cash reserves, money in the bank. If they were at this level, that would represent fifty percent of our expenses or fifty percent reserves. If they were at this level, that would represent a hundred percent reserves. Here is just a graphic that depicts the difference that we're seeing currently between the amount we pay for water from our wholesale provider and the amount that we charge our customers. And as you can see, we're currently paying about a dollar fifty per thousand gallons on average. And we're charging about a dollar thirty-one per thousand gallons on average, which means we are losing money. And I assume that's only temporary, but that's the current state of our water costs. If we move to sewer, we have the same two scenarios. We're looking at a possible shortfall of revenues mainly because of some large expenses that are coming up at the sewer treatment plant. We've been informed that our city's portion of their capital upgrades will be approximately four million dollars for grit removal equipment and then two million dollars for phosphorus removal equipment, which is required by the EPA. So, if we don't increase our rates, here's the gap in revenues. If we do increase our rates, here's the other scenario. We're a little bit closer. At least we're close to the trend line. And that's generally what we aim for, is the trend line of our expenses that are increasing. Same with storm, two scenarios. Here's the scenario if we don't change any rates and revenues. You see the gap between revenues and expenses. Next scenario, if we do implement the two-phase rate changes, revenues are much closer to our expenses. This is a summary of the exact upgrades that the state is requiring of us as a result of the audit that was performed recently. You'll see a total of about three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars per year in personnel costs, which comes from about six new employees that we're being required to hire. And equipment, about a half a million dollars worth of equipment, of actor truck, four hundred thousand dollars, and a few pickup trucks. Next fund is solid waste. Same thing. Here's the scenario with no changes and the scenario with the rate changes. Our revenues are much closer to expenses. Streetlights, we're not proposing any changes tonight, but this is just a long-term look, a twenty-year look at our streetlight fund, which is a little bit different than the others. We have the spike in costs here just last year during our LED light installation. Costs we expect to level out for the next fifteen years or so. And then the LED bond, which we'll be paying on this whole time, will end and our costs will come down significantly. Overall, we're meeting our costs, but as you can see down here, our cash reserves are a small proportion of our expenses and will probably go negative within the next five or six years if we don't change our revenues. Here's the second scenario. If we included DPW bond, that just makes the scenario even a little bit uglier. We'll go negative a little bit sooner. And that's all I have in terms of utility rates. Do you have any questions?
Questions for council? I have two on streetlights specifically. One is, what is the refund from Rocky Mountain Power?
We don't know. They haven't told us.
So, that's not in this equation?
There is an estimate. There is an estimate. It's built into the equation, and I believe it's somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars. But that's built in already.
And I noticed that the line continues to go up even though we're supposed to save up to eighty percent in our power cost per year and the lights are supposed to last out to twenty years rather than two to three years.
Well, that's right. The line is going, oops, the line is going up because we have bond payments this whole time. That's why the line drops below where it would have been normally after the bond payments end.
But the bond payment is the same, right, every year?
Sure, but there's lots of other expenses in there too that increase, such as energy. Even though we're saving money on energy per light, there's still more lights to pay for every year as population grows, not to mention personnel costs.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. You actually asked one of the questions that I had on the streetlights, so appreciate that. Steve, could you go back? I believe it was the, I don't remember. I had a question about two or three slides ago. The solid, I think it was solid waste. This is no rate changes. You know what? I don't recall what it was right now, so I will defer. If it comes back to me, I'll let you know.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as I look at the water chart you're showing, it says that we are spending more than we're getting coming in. How long has that been the situation?
That's a good question. My best guess would be three years because that's when we adjusted the rates last and we were breaking even, basically. So, probably three years.
Okay. And then as I look at that chart you provided, it showed that our unrestricted cash has still been increasing during the past three years. Why would that increase if our expenses are higher than our revenue?
Let's take a look. Unrestricted cash was increasing for a few years, yes. I, I'm sorry, what was your question?
So, my question is, if we're actually spending more money than we're getting in during those last three years, why is unrestricted cash higher during the same time period?
Well, you'll notice during those particular years, we were bringing in more money than our expenses, which means we're accruing small profits every year. But currently, we're in the opposite situation. We're losing money, which means our cash balances are going down. It's just two different trends.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Haga.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, Steve. So, I've studied this for a week or so. First thing, a question I have is AMI meters. Can you define what AMI meter is?
Sure. It stands for Automated Metering Infrastructure, which is the new technology which will allow us to read the meters automatically by radio signals. It requires us to put in a new register, not replace the whole meter, but just the register on top of the meter. And in the long run, it will help us to save money on personnel that don't need to drive around and read the meters manually. It will give us hourly data instead of monthly data. And as we replace some of the actual meters themselves, we'll recoup some of the lost revenue from old meters that are losing accuracy.
The other question, and I kind of knew it was that, but acronyms get tough sometimes. So, on the capital projects that we have here, because if you look at our present budget, we forecast out five years. Did you take into account the fact that we have most of those capital projects funded?
I'm not sure what you mean by funded.
Well, they're in the budget. I was just reading it.
Well, what I can tell you is that what we've done for the last several years is when we do this analysis, we look at a six-year window. Capital projects go up and down every year. They can be a little bit sporadic. So, we look at a six-year window and take an average. It's a moving window, right? So, this year's number, for example, would take the next six-year average and plug that in as the capital expense.
And then, maybe one of our representatives on the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy, I mean, we have to buy water. We know that. Is this a realistic number, five percent per year across the board?
Very realistic. They have told us to plan on four to five percent indefinitely. And they have been passing on those increases to us. In fact, last year, it was over six percent. Most recently, it was about three and a half, but somewhere around four or five percent is very realistic.
And we don't buy water on contracts, so we prepare for these increases. Is it year to year that they just charge us? Or do we, again, I'm not an expert on this, so I'm kind of relying on you. Is this the contract that we've signed, five percent a year?
We do have a contract with them for a minimum amount that we have to pay whether we use it or not. But fortunately, there's a twenty percent buffer. We can purchase more above that contract amount. The actual rates that we pay, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of control over that. We have a representative on the board at Jordan Valley and that representative helps to vote on those rate increases. But we don't have much choice other than to pay what they charge.
And then, the last, on the sewer, oh, I have two more questions. Excuse me. On the sewer fund, solid, what we call solid waste. Is that what we call solid waste?
Solid waste is...
No, solid is garbage. Sorry. So, we refinance, that's how, the term I use, the bond we had on the plant. Did they not take into account that they would have some major capital expenses on that bond?
Oh, so you are talking about sewer.
So, we refinanced or rebonded, if I recall, a few years ago. Did they not account for some of these capital expenses?
Oh, this is, these are new expenditures. These are requirements from the EPA that even they learned about only recently. And they passed on the information to us as soon as they could. But this is totally separate from the existing bond that we have.
And then, you know, we have the public, I'm a big proponent of the public works department in getting this built. What would be, and have you calculated that, our debt service payment per department? Have you calculated that number per year?
Yeah, we have. And we can only estimate because we don't have the actual bond yet. But it's different for every utility department. It's a proportion of the bond payment that's relative to the size of the department. I can give you those numbers later if you need them.
Well, buying the bonds with the right interest is really vital. That's one reason, I guess, we wanted to refinance the sewer. If we're going to bond for this public works building, interest rates are very important at this time because aren't they at their lowest?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not a bond expert. Couldn't say.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Steve. Sorry, I tried to split that up, but it was better altogether, so appreciate it. I will now open the public hearing for item seven A. Steve Jones has signed up to speak. Now would be your time.
Steve Jones, thirty-two, thirty-four west, sixty-nine, twenty south. Just a general reminder, I know I don't have any problem myself paying for things that I use. And I realize the costs go up. But just a general reminder, and I consider myself pretty average, but I haven't had a pay raise in a couple of years. And my company told me not very long ago that we're not going to get one for next year. And so, I would expect that the city council that represents me would take that into consideration that, I guess, I look at, when I look through some of these numbers, I kind of wonder, and I'm definitely not an expert, but I kind of wonder if some of these one-shot-deal-type things, rather than being passed on in a rate increase, could not be pulled out of, you know, this emergency fund that we have in such a large quantity. But I'll leave that and defer that to you guys as to decide whether that's relevant. The one thing I did notice in the packet to do with the impact fees is I'm a little perplexed why multifamily dwellings in some of the most critical areas seem to have the impact fees going down. And in this day and age, when everything is going up, that just doesn't set very well with me considering that multifamily dwellings are probably one of the biggest drains on the city when we look at our police and we look at our fire and we look at our infrastructure. So, I would ask that that number be looked at very carefully. So I would ask that that number be looked at very carefully, um, 'cause when I ran the numbers, when I break it down to a individual person and then using the numbers that are in the chart, reback, back calculate it, it seems to me that, uh, the multifamily dwellings are kind of getting a little bit of a break. Um, I don't understand how the impact fees are, are, uh, spent and what they can be used on, but it seems like to me that they could be used to offset, um, where they, where they can be used and then free up that money to, uh, do other things like, um, hire police officers and firefighters where we're already tremendously short. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's always a big thing, and it's always a sensitive subject, so I don't want to make this sound like I'm, I'm complaining, but I just would hope that all due diligence is paid to increase things where they're needed to balance and things that can be used where we have an emergency fund, where we have, and it's, and it's way over where it needs to be, that some of those dollars will be pulled out of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing item seven A? Seeing the one, I will close the public hearing. And we'll have no business on this item. We'll move directly to the business item. Business item eight A, discussion and possible action regarding water rates. Steve.
Thank you. I, I don't have any new information to present, but I can answer questions, um, maybe about each fund one at a time, if you like.
Yeah, I think we'll have to do it once, one at a time as we discuss and move on each item separately. Questions from council. Councilmember Hagan.
So maybe this question is good to bill, and I kind of touched a little bases up with you last council meeting on our restricted money that we have in our accounts that are restricted for capital projects and the unrestricted amounts. 'Cause currently, if, if, what I'm seeing is we have two thousand sixteen still estimated and twenty fifteen is, um, kind of already set in stone because of the caper, as far as what we have in reserve. So how are we projecting these capitals if we don't know what we have that's restricted money-wise? 'Cause this is, all you've accounted for is the unrestricted money. What restricted money do we have in this water fund?
We have, we have both unrestricted and restricted monies, but, uh, uh, yeah, they're used for various capital projects and operations.
But we don't have a total then.
I do have a total.
You have a total, right?
Eight million, five hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars current as of August thirty-first. That's restricted and unrestricted in the water fund.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Steve, I want to thank you for all the time you spent with me on going over this. And the information you provided has been really helpful. I don't have a whole grid on it yet because this, this water bill is quite complicated, knowing that we pay seven different rates in a year, if we take into account our own wells, and we charge for six different rates for the water going out. And the fact that what we charge doesn't correlate with the money that comes in, I mean, that's working. Doesn't correlate with the money that goes out. So it's extremely complicated, and I, I've been trying to make it more simple for me to understand. And that graph you showed was very helpful because it simplifies it down, yet it lumps it all together. And I'm still under the thought process, that one there. So that, that's nice, that's helpful, 'cause it takes the averages of everything and puts it all together. And those, and however, in projecting what we're going to have in the future, what the costs are in the future, if we take it all together as one lump, then it works fine, but it don't get charged in one lump. So it could still vary, we could come out ahead of the law, but at least we have an adage, which is very helpful. I'm still in wanting to take more time and look to see if there's a better way that we could do our water and fix that. So I would really like to have more information and some options of some ways that we could do this and not be spending more than we're getting. And I know this is gonna happen right now. But ha- so we don't spend more than we're getting, but we can see how we're covering our expenses and see where the percentage is and make sure that some of our residents aren't subsidizing some others and others are paying higher for them. So I, I hope I don't sound too jumbled, but when you're talking about water, that's how it comes out. Anyway, it's really not a question, it's just a statement. And thank you for the time you've been working with me, and we'll be doing more of this, I'm sure.
Councilmember Coney, did you have a question? Sorry, I thought I'd show you that. Uh, Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just one question for you, Steve. As I see these, uh, projections and, and the, the graph lines and things, it really helps me to get a picture of that. Um, I know before I was on the council and before I was on the budget committee and all those other things that, um, looking at, at city things over the years and just as an average citizen, which is who ultimately pays all of our bills. And, um, they, they just want to look at this and say, well, can't you just make the expenses line lower? As opposed to raising a raise, can't you just reduce expenses? And so all I want to ask is, is there anything left to, to reasonably save money on expenses-wise? I understand to keep pace with the expenses line, we have to raise the revenue line because the expenses line always goes up. But is there any way to flatten that out that we haven't already looked at? Uh, my gut feeling is staff's already looked at this, but I just want to throw that out there.
Very good question. I, I don't know if I'm qualified to answer that question since I, I'm not in charge of the specific budgets. Wendell, would you like to comment on that?
Well, we actually have been looking at that, and we had a meeting this afternoon with the city manager to talk about what happens if the fee, this fee or other fees are not, uh, increased. Uh, there were areas such as the meters that we've talked about. Uh, that's probably the biggest place that we could, uh, save, but at the same time, the meters themselves are, we purchased those about ten years ago. And we're in the process of, uh, some of the meter heads, we actually have to replace now because they're becoming obsolete. And so we're, we're trying to replace those. That's really where we get our revenue. And so if you don't replace those, then you're, you're losing, you're losing money to begin with. As far as the other operations, operational costs, it's, uh, you know, we have staff. Uh, they're efficient at what they do. Uh, we spend money on, uh, the water that we get from Jordan Valley. That's, you know, that's pretty much set. I think that the, I think that we're doing as, as best as we can to conserve, uh, funds. So there's a little bit, but not much that we could...
And that's basically the worst-case scenario. If this didn't pass, you would find places to, uh, not, not happy places, but places, if, if you had to. And, and I'm, I'm throwing that out there as, as a, a layman observer who, that's what everybody, everybody always says until they sit back in, in these seats, it's, well, there's so much excess, there's so much waste in government, there's so much, it, you know, it's government work. You don't think they spend thirty thousand dollars for a toilet seat, do you? You know, that kind of stuff. And so I just want to get on the record and have you go, as well, as saying, most of the measures that we're trying to implement here will actually save money in the long run, right? Like the meters, for example. If we don't do that, it's gonna cost more later.
That's correct. We have other issues like we had a lightning strike out at one of our pump stations. That cost about fifty thousand dollars to go in and fix that because it burned out some of the controls. We have pumps that are getting older, we need to go in and maintain them. We have air conditioning, uh, that is in some of the pump stations to reduce the heat. Those are going out. You know, it's, it's something new every year that, that we have to maintain, uh, with systems that are getting a bit older.
Right. Thank you, appreciate that.
Anyone else? Thanks, Steve. We'll turn to the council for discussion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. Um, some questions were asked, I'll address some of these. This is just respective to water. Um, the Conservancy has had a stance of going up each year, four, and then they all got it, four percent and five percent. So on average, that would be I guess four and a half percent, somewhere in there. Um, as that progresses and goes in time, um, this is what I'm seeing. My two years serving on the board, you can see it quickly, we've talked about it here. It's all about planning for the future. If suddenly today, Riverton, Harriman, South Jordan and West Jordan said, we're not gonna allow another house to be built, guess what? Your water's not gonna go up very much every year. It's gonna go up a percent or two, that's about it. Problem is, it's all about growth. And in order to project for that growth, um, we're obligated, uh, to plan for that growth. And part of that is this Bear River project. I'm not saying that dollar per dollar that's going in today is going in Bear River, but it's ramping up to that point that where we're looking thirty to sixty years from now, when we actually have to draw from a bear river, we will be prepared. And, um, it's a real fine line, uh, in that preparation because you'd much rather do a few percentage points now versus a hundred to two to three hundred percent increase suddenly when the dam up north is gonna be built. And we are obligated to pay for it in order to get water. So that, that's just something out there, that's part of it. I'll give you an example of one, one item. Uh, we're purchasing property today in the Conservancy District to, uh, uh, for the Bear River project. Parcels of land where that new aqueduct will be. That's part of the money that West Jordan, South Jordan, Harriman, Riverton, these communities are contributing to now, not in large, but not in large amounts, but in small amounts. Uh, you'll see a fifty thousand dollar purchase here or there. And those small things are going to have huge dividends in the end, and we don't have to buy the property then, uh, all in one single swoop. I think there's a little explanation behind that, but the bulk of what we're actually seeing in those rate increases now is for the water we're currently using and for the infrastructure that already exists and for the replacement. Very similar to what we do in the city. Um, the, the system itself is very complicated, as, uh, Councilmember Burton has mentioned. A lot of that has to do with the fact that the Conservancy District spends a lot of time saying, hey, to get water to this zone, it takes a certain amount of pressure to get that water there. Therefore, we have to pay for the pumps, and therefore that cost needs to go directly towards that zone. Therefore, we have zones, not just across West Jordan, but across all these communities, uh, in the valley. And it, so it is quite complicated. And West Jordan's, our fair share this last year, we didn't, even though the Conservancy District went up by a smaller percentage across the board, West Jordan's rates went up six percent. Why is that? It's because compared to the other communities, we use more water for consumer than our neighbors around us. It's very simple. That's why every time I'm up here talking about it, that we need to conserve, conserve, conserve. Quite directly, those costs come back to West Jordan because we're not conserving. And, and it's a challenge to this council, I, I strongly recommend that we, uh, we implement as a cost saving measure on water, uh, ordinances that are Conservancy-minded. I'm talking about when we, we're talking about, uh, new development, what goes in those new developments. Rather than a bright green lawn over ninety-five percent of the landscape, why aren't we reimbursing that? Where it's more of a maintenance-free landscape, yeah, or at least lesser degree of maintenance. Those are some, some ideas. That just gives a little background to where we're at. Um, I love this chart right here, it's very simple. Um, I, I echo what Councilmember Burton said. This graph right here, it just presents it. We're processing right now, as of today, dollar fifty per thousand gallons. And we know next year it's probably gonna go up just a little bit, but that's where it's at right now. And we're charging an dollar thirty-one. To me, that's pretty simple. You use it, that's what you should pay for it. Now, if we can cut expenses, grid it, as, as Councilmember, um, uh, Jacob mentioned, um, but to me, that's pretty simple. That's a fourteen and a half percent increase right there, just to match as we move forward. Now granted, we do have a little bit of an unrestricted balance, so we need to kind of make sure that we have that accounted for, but just all things being even, that is the best graph I've seen so far. It just presents it to the public in a very direct way that they can understand. Anyway, just a few comments, that's it. Thank you.
I have some comments, if anyone else, uh... First, uh, thank you, Councilmember Nichols, for explaining that. Uh, uh, as Councilmember Nichols described, I think that's why our impact fee structure is fa- failing because we have more than enough water for the residents that exist today and, and we can supply, according to Richard Bay, more water than we have in, uh, used for in the city today. So the, the water projects you described should be paid for in impact fees because the existing residents shouldn't pay for future impacts, in my opinion. And, uh, and thank you for explaining that. I, I do agree that we need to prepare for the future. Uh, the only thing that I think is amiss is the impact fee structure that we saw earlier does not take into account the Bear River pipeline and other sources to, uh, the impact fees. I don't understand why it doesn't, but it certainly does not cover. So I don't believe that our current residents should be paying any of that future impact. I just don't believe that's right, and I've always stated that. The other thing, I love this graph as well. Um, it's not really the graph, this chart. And if you take note, tier three and four are actually paying for the water of tier two and one and also subsidizing the rate for all commercial, industrial and multifamily. And the city manager, uh, asked anything that we wanted to talk about, the strategic plan. Um, I think we need to have a concise discussion about, uh, water rates, the future of water at, and I'd ask you to put that on the agenda. And I think it would be irresponsible for this council to pass anything on this at this time. We're only a couple of months from strategic plan, so at least for the water, um, I believe that there needs to be adjustments made. And then I also, I'll, I'll let you, allow you to comment, but I believe one of the reasons we pay, paid the higher rate last year is because the peaking factor, as Richard Bay and the CFO of Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District explained to me in a meeting a couple of months ago, our peaking is still, uh, worse than all but one entity in the district. The way I was explaining, you know, that it could be off, but we're almost the worst. So that's another reason that we're being charged a higher rate. Um, I think there's some adjustments to our system that could, uh, soften that out because you're, you're rated on one day, uh, for the peaking factor. So I don't believe we're anywhere near prepared to set a rate on the water. I'd be glad to turn it over to the council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate what you're saying on the tiers and, and, uh, and I, I believe you're correct that we do need a discussion of strategic plan. However, uh, this discussion, I think we're already a couple of months behind on in that this was in the budget for this year when we started discussing it in May, um, or sooner, April, wherever it was. We approved the budget that had these increases in it. Now, if we had an issue with these increases, that budget should not have been approved. However, the budget's approved, the expenses are, are out there, and we're not going to provide the revenue that's in the budget that was approved. Um, I just think our, our horse has left the barn and it's a little late to close the gate. Now, we'll close the gate on next year, for sure. But, uh, in, in my opinion, this, this discussion is, is a week old, so to speak, six months old. And, uh, it's time to, uh, it's time to live up to what we approved in the budget. Now, if, if we didn't like the budget, we had... I was gonna say ample opportunity, maybe it was slightly less than ample, but we had an opportunity to, uh... I was going to say ample opportunity, maybe it was slightly less than ample, but we had an opportunity to hash this out six months ago, eight months ago. And anyway, that's just where I am right now. This money's already been budgeted for, we already approved the expenses that this is going to pay for. I think it's disingenuous of us to pull the rug out from under it now. Thanks.
Actually, I'd like to comment on that. We did actually discuss this and we had a vote on it and it failed three to three prior. We had a public hearing on this item. So it's already been discussed, it failed prior. And we do have eight and a half million in reserves, so I think in a couple of months, we can buy the time to actually do this right rather than rush through it. And we can adjust the, twenty-six times out of every year, we can adjust the budget.
Councilmember Hager.
That's actually, just to reemphasize, thanks Mayor, is we do have opportunity to change rates when the council has a majority to decide, first with the public hearing and doing the same process we're doing. The projection that I see, yeah, water's going to go up, we all know that. Five percent, though, is not across the board. That's basically five percent of what we budget per year. And there's other expenses in the water budget that are not accounted for here, but you know, at this time, from my perspective, seeing the capital, the unrestricted money, we have time to make a more informed decision based on facts, facts of where is our capital money going that's restricted? I can see it, but no one is able to explain it to me. And then on our unrestricted money, you've got to understand, that's just savings. That's not money that we've designated for anything yet. And the council has the authority to designate that to other capital projects. So at this present time, I agree with the mayor because I can see the numbers myself. Eight point five million dollars, that's hard for me to justify raising any of the rates on the residents. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm rather torn on this one. I appreciate the comments that you made and I very much like the idea of revisiting the rate structure in a little bit more detail during strategic planning that Councilmember Burton brought with that same desire. I think that would be appropriate. I worry about how substantial the difference is right now, though, compared to the cost to run the system versus the revenues that are coming in. So part of me would like to take action, well, first of all, let me say the proposed changes for the July 1, 2017, I would I would remove those from the equation altogether. I'm just looking at the one set of rates that were proposed to go into effect ninety days from now. And with those rates, part of me would like to see this move forward so that we can start filling in some of that gap and then make additional fine tuning as necessary in January. But at the same time, I don't want to necessarily be hitting residents with multiple changes in rapid succession. I'd like to do it once and do it right. But again, the longer we take, the more dramatic that gap becomes. But as was mentioned, we do have some reserves in there. I'm not sure how comfortable I am digging into those reserves while things wait. I think I would rather pull the trigger and at least make somewhat of a course correction now and then refine it later rather than wait until January. My apologies, I'm informing my thoughts and opinions as I'm speaking. I think I'd like to make a course correction now rather than wait till January. Because what we saw this year was, there was a proposal brought forth and it was lacking the information that we had requested and we desired to see. Additional information was brought back and that didn't quite match. And then, or that was still lacking, additional, or that final information was added, but we didn't have a full body of the council. I worry about how far this could potentially be pushed down the road. So I'm leaning more towards a minor course correction now with the full review during strategic planning to address the deficiencies that are out there. That said, I think I'll hold my further comments. Thank you.
I just have one final comment, and I've talked about this ad nauseam for months. I guess the real question is, how much is enough? In the rainy day fund for each of these issues, in my opinion, twenty percent is more than enough. A hundred percent is way too much. And drawing down some of the reserves for me is the right thing to do. I think the water fund, if I remember right, if we make no changes, goes through the entire year of 2018, still has two point six, point eight four in unrestricted reserves. So I think, again, my opinion is, it's irresponsible to raise rates at this point in time. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. And this question, I think, is going to be directed more to finance. We have the restricted funds that can only be used for certain projects and then we have the unrestricted funds that can be allocated anywhere. Those unrestricted funds, do we know how much of those funds are budgeted towards certain projects? Or are those unrestricted funds what's being referred to as like a rainy day fund or an emergency fund that has no allocation or allotments or direction associated about that? Perhaps that question was for Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, yes, it was. Counsel, every year, we publish in the budget book a strategic plan that is by enterprise fund, by project. Each project shows existing and growth. Each of those projects is on a spreadsheet and each project shows the amount of impact fees or growth, money that's attributable to it, so the restricted cash is the growth in that spreadsheet. And the unrestricted cash is existing in those spreadsheets. Every project is in front of you for six years into the future, including the present year, inside every budget book that we do every year. I do those spreadsheets, so I know that. So if you have questions after you look at those and you want to cut certain projects, we go right off of those spreadsheets to, if there's no revenue coming in, if we have a hiccup in the economy like we did during the recession and growth money does not come in, growth projects get suspended when there's no impact fee revenue. Or if you don't raise rates tonight, we will be projecting to suspend current existing projects in the budget that don't have the revenue attributable to them. So that is right there in front of you in your present budget book.
So that's what I was getting at, that eight million dollars in unrestricted cash is not unallocated. That eight million is lined up with other capital projects that are out there.
It's completely allocated between many different line items because you have utility billing, you have the payment for Jordan Valley that comes out of the unrestricted cash and you have ongoing operations and maintenance, all of your water staff. Your Blue Stakes crew comes out of that revenue. So that's fully allocated. And if it is a reserve, by the way, AWWA recommends one hundred and ten percent of annual revenues as a reserve. That is the national engineering body that governs all waterworks in the nation. That's what they recommend. We don't have to set it that high, but that's what they recommend. But the reserve amount that you have is for that entire operating side of your system. Your power costs, your employee costs and so forth, as well as capital projects.
You mean the overage for those, not, because they're already budgeted in there. The reserves are the reserves. They're not, the unrestricted reserves are unrestricted reserves and would cover the overages. That's...
That's correct.
Okay. I move to table the discussion on water rates until strategic plan, when we can do a more concise evaluation of the water rate structure, the costs and specifically the commercial, industrial and multifamily water rates. For the strategic plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Rolfe and a second by Councilmember Hager. Discussion and motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to scramble to find the numbers in the packet and I don't... I don't see the numbers that I'm looking for. In the request for council action, it talks about the impact this would have, where if passed, it'd be two point six million additional annual revenue. And then it notes that new revenues would also include the one hundred and twenty thousand from existing commercial customers with a new large user rate. Would you be willing to entertain the idea of passing at least that large user rate?
I would. I would add that as a friendly amendment, that we will immediately move to raise the commercial, industrial and multifamily rate to at least the cost of the water from Jordan Valley Water, or the cost of producing water at a dollar fifty per thousand. Do you second that?
Excuse me. So let me understand this correctly. So we're still, we're going to delay a rate increase, but we're going to increase commercial and multifamily?
Commercial, industrial and multifamily. Right now, it would cover the cost of a logger to them. We're not going to touch single-family residential at this point until further discussion.
Second, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. An amended motion and a second. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. And then further to that, you made the commentary, when this tells strategic planning, would the intent be that this be discussed as strategic planning and then new rates go into effect July 1st? Or would you expect that it would go into effect?
As soon as it can be implemented after.
Okay, so that would be what, ninety days after, let's say?
I don't think it's ninety days on that. That's only on impact fees.
Okay.
Am I right, Counselor? It would be immediate effect. If we pass something tonight, it goes into effect immediately. Only the impact fees have to wait ninety days. So these fees that we're talking about in the next, in these four items, go into effect immediately, whatever changes we make.
I think I could be supportive of the amended motion, though I would be curious to hear other thoughts regarding the motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. The new revenues for the large user rate will include one hundred and twenty thousand dollars from one existing commercial customer. Is that correct? And that's what it says on the staff report. So I said that's correct. So if I'm correct in my, what I'm understanding this motion to be, then it's to table the water rates for everybody except for one customer? So tonight, we're going to effectively raise rates on a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for one customer?
That's not true.
Because that would stink to be that guy.
I stated all commercial, water, what we call volume sales, industrial and including multifamily rates will go up immediately. That's the motion.
Okay, in that case, I have a question that we know the total fiscal impact is of just that part of the rate increase. Do we know the total fiscal impact is of that one, that part?
Of course I don't.
In that case, I'm opposed to...
I know that we're losing...
In that case, I'm opposed to...
Thirty-two cents a thousand right now.
Right, I'm opposed to the motion without having a fiscal impact of what that motion entails. I think it's irresponsible. Thanks.
Councilmember Burton.
You mentioned you want to do that immediately. Would you entertain the idea of making that effective on January 1st, so they have time to adjust their new fee schedule?
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Do you second that?
Yes.
Councilmember Hager.
So, you know, I saw this graph also and it shows inequity as far as those of us, sixty-five percent of us that live in West Jordan, that pay for water rates for water versus others. So this will give us a revenue source that we're asking for. And I think hopefully maybe during retreat, we discuss about maybe a flat rate or something to that effect to where everyone's paying the same, at least residents that live here and pay taxes, so. Again, I'll second this motion as proposed.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to put a number to it if we can. Are you then saying the seven point two percent rate increase on everything except single-family, basically?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I, my math was wrong. It's twenty-two cents, not thirty-two cents for a thousand. Councilmember McConaughey.
Just to clarify, I believe the city manager was asking if the proposed, and then what was a seven point two percent rate increase, but it was actually a proposed rate of a dollar fifty to match what we're paying. Is that understanding correct?
Yeah, I don't know what that percentage, but...
Can I comment on that? It's not that simple. We've got lots of different rates that we pay based on elevation. The, what's proposed here in the staff report is a cost plus six percent. That means there's lots of different costs plus six percent, depending on where you're located. Now, if council is proposing something totally different, that's, that's fine. But I would caution you from using the dollar fifty. That's a citywide average. It's very different than looking at just commercial and multifamily and industrial customers. Currently, commercial properties only pay a flat rate, a dollar twenty-eight per thousand.
Yeah, a buck fifty's a heck of a lot better than a dollar twenty-eight.
Okay, as long as we're clear. So it's not seven point two percent, it's a dollar fifty?
Dollar fifty, that was the motion. That's all.
Councilmember Rice?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
I will say, the state make the statement with a no that I'm close, but not quite there.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hager? Councilmember McConaughey?
No, with the same comment as Councilmember Nichols. If we're open to further conversation, I do have a couple of other comments.
Vote fails three to four.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. So I quickly pulled up the full fee schedule and I see what Mr. Glenn was referencing. I think where it has the rate based on meter size, everything from three-quarter inch up to ten inch and then there's the demand factor that derives the monthly rate. Was that what you were referencing when you were talking about the complexity to the rate structure?
That's part of it. I was referring to the wholesale costs that we charge. If we went with the approach of cost plus six percent, there's lots of different wholesale costs that would have six percent added to those various rates. But you're talking about another level of... But you're talking about another level of complexity, which is the monthly fixed fee on top of the water commodity costs. I don't, I don't think the proposal included anything to affect the fixed availability charge. Are you looking at the availability charges?
Uh...
The proposal that I heard only deals with the commodity costs.
Residential, there's meter charge, meter charge, meter charge.
Yeah, when it says meter charge, that's the availability charge.
Where would I be seeing the usage charge?
It's probably just one small number down at the bottom that says 1.28 per thousand gallons.
There's one on here, that's irrigation, 1.78 per thousand, okay. The charge per thousand gallons, $1.20, 28 cents.
Yes.
So couldn't that ever be changed to $1.28, $1.50? Was that what the motion was?
That's what the motion was. Now, I, what he, I want to be clear on this. I don't know, that's why we need further discussion, and I won't, I won't be supporting any other motions other than to discuss this at length and get it right. Because what Steve's saying is, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are six different zones in this city, and I believe, according to what Richard Bay and the CFO of Water, Jordan Valley, our raw water charge is actually $1.38 per thousand, not $1.50. Now, we add pumping costs onto that, but, and I don't want to be quoted, because it's pretty close to that. So I figure to adjust that rate right now, because you can see the disparity in what we're paying versus what our large end users are paying is a long way. So that's why I'd fix that now, and we'll have that discussion at length, but that motion failed, so I would now want to discuss this at length. And it won't be an easy discussion, because there are six different grades. There's summer, and there's winter. There's a lot of things to discuss.
If, if you'd entertain it, I would be willing to re, or, I'm not sure procedurally how we do this, but I'd like to reconsider the vote, since I was on the prevailing side. If you're open for the same motion again, I would like to revoke on that one, now that we have the clarity that it's just that one number, the $1.28, that would be changing to $1.50.
That would be in order. So the motion is to reconsider the original motion.
Yes.
I will second that. You are on the prevailing side, so I can second. So we have a motion to reconsider the original motion by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second by Mayor Rolfe. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Hagge.
Again, to make sure I, we have understanding, we are proposing a rate increase of 22 cents or is it 23 cents on commercial, industrial, and multifamily?
Well, it's up to $1.50.
Well, aren't they paying 1.28 right now?
It's equals 22 cents, but the motion was $1.50.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, the current motion on the table is to reopen the reconsideration of the previous motion.
Yes, that's right.
Whether or not we want to vote on it again, we have to vote so that we can vote.
That's right.
So you want to make sure we're on the same page. Thanks.
This is to reconsider.
Right.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagge.
No.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes four to three. To reconsider.
Okay, we're back to the original motion, which raises the commercial, industrial, and multifamily rate to $1.50, and leaves a single-family residential water sales rate until we discuss it at strategic plan, where it is. To make it, yes. January 1st will be the effective date. Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagge?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Vote passes four to three.
This is item 8E, discussion and possible action regarding sewer rates. Steve?
No other information, unless you have questions to ask.
Questions from Steve Glenn.
From four. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is the question that I forgot earlier, but I'm 100% sure, so. The $3 million for the subsidizing impact fees, $4 million for South Valley Water Reclamation, and the $2 million for South Valley Water Reclamation that's included in this, is that a result of the EPA audit, or am I confusing that with something else?
That's separate.
That's separate, okay.
And maybe I can clarify one more thing. The $3 million subsidizing, subsidy for impact fees is not built into the rates, but it is built into the cash balance, because...
The expenses.
It's a temporary expense that we expect will be repaid by the impact fees.
All right. Thank you.
I need clarification on that, Steve. Are you saying that impact fees will pick that up and just have Karen currently? Is that what you're saying?
That's right. Impact fee revenues balance has been negative for a couple of years now.
I'm sure if you're done, thanks, Steve.
Councilmember Hagge.
This is one, I think also, just because there's a lot of questions as far as what the government is requiring our district to do, and perhaps maybe it's again prudent to postpone that to a strategic plan, so we know what those are. And as far as the capital projects that are required by assuming the federal government, and we can make appropriate decisions based on the facts. Thanks, Mayor.
If there's no further discussion, I move to adopt the city manager's recommended sewer rate increase, the effective dates of December 1, 2016, and July 1, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. So to clarify, both the January increase and the subsequent July increase?
Yes, as proposed in the packet.
Thank you.
I will not be supporting the motion. We have currently in restricted and unrestricted $10,456,697, which is more than the annual cost to operate the sewer, the entire sewer system of West Jordan. Until it drops below that rate, I wouldn't be in support of a, a increase on this fee.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. In contrast, I would be supporting this motion. I looked at the future graph. This is the one that's most clear of all of them. We're showing that the unrestricted balance, which has been thrown around very loosely, will be gone in two years without this change. And with this change, we're showing a restricted, unrestricted balance, even with this change, two years from now, we're looking at about a $2 million balance, which to me is a much more comfortable balance. So I'll be supporting the motion. And I don't, yeah, that's, that's...
Mayor Rolfe?
No.
Councilmember Hagge?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
Item 8C, discussion and possible action regarding storm rain water rates. Steve?
I'm here to answer questions.
Question for Steve.
Hey, sir. Steve, just one question, follow-up on my previous question. This one has to do with the audit from the EPA. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And if rates are not raised to cover the items in the audit, what will the potential penalty or fine be? Do we know that number?
That's a good question. I, I don't know if we have a number, but Wendell left a comment.
We did, well, we've been through an audit last December. They gave us a list of things that we had to do. A big portion of that was enforcement and cleaning of the system. I can't tell you exactly what the state will do, but I can tell you what they did to the county. The county, I don't want to say they ignored what the state wanted them to do, but they ended up being fined, $1 million to begin with. They were taken to court, they ended up settling in a settlement, where they ended up paying $280,000 in a fine, and were still required to hire the staff and the equipment, nine people and equipment, to, to meet the preliminary requirements.
So, so just to clarify, they had to incur the expenses that they had decided not to incur, and get fined on top of that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, could we go back to the chart that showed where you broke down the cost of employee of that?
Sure.
I, I just wanted to point out that the one-time cost of 535,215,000 is, or $215, is, would come out of the fleet fund, which currently holds 5.4 million dollars in it. It wouldn't be attributed to the storm rain fees.
My understanding is that all vehicles are initially paid by the fleet fund, and then that cost is passed on to that department that uses the vehicle.
Well, I'm just saying that since we have 5.4 million dollars in there, it'd be easier to pull it out of there and not make the citizens pay for it, since there's already money sitting...
Council, uh, city manager.
We actually did that. I remember when we originally came, we were looking at a 48% increase, and so we really took your suggestion, and we're, we're planning to pay cash for those vehicles, and that brought it down to a 28% increase. So we looked at that already.
Yeah, I just didn't, I only showed this screen, I didn't reflect that, so.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, we made the change to the ERU calculation. Do we know what the fiscal impact of that has been?
Roughly, almost, almost a million dollars. It brought up our revenues from about $2 million to $3 million, something like that. But it is a little bit complex, because it crossed over a couple of different budget years.
Thank you.
I just wanted to state that currently in the restricted and unrestricted funds, the stormwater has $13,119,600. Hopefully, this summer, we'll spend $4 to $5 million of that and complete the 70s South storm rate, which will still be $9,000, which is three times what it costs to operate annually without this addition.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. One more question for you, Steve. You mentioned that 110% reserve recommendation on the water rates. Is that applying across all these utilities, or is there varying recommendations as far as what recommended reserves are for stormwater funds, for example?
That's a good question. AWWA focuses on water, right? Whether or not those numbers apply to sewer and storm, I don't know, but in concept, they're all the same. They're, they're all enterprise funds that are not, maximum and minimum cash balances are not specified by law, and they operate exactly the same, so I would assume that the recommendations would apply, in, in theory at least.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Councilmember Hagge.
I just want to make the same statement, based on the reserves we have and possible capital projects that we might have to budget for, that we wait until strategic plan to decide how we allocate the reserves, and if we need to raise for more revenue. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. We have one more question for you. Appreciate your indulging me. On the graph, if you could, if we pull up the graph on this one, the no rate changes proposal? There we go. Prior to 2012, did we not have a storm drain? I should know this off the top of my head, but, did we not have a storm rate? We didn't.
That's right. It operated out of the sewer department for many years, and in 2012, it was separated as a separate fund.
Okay. And in 2012, as the initial, you know, going into effect, it went into effect, it looks like revenues were below expenses, yet there was an infusion of surplus or unrestricted cash. Can you help me understand that a little bit?
Sure. That's the note on the far right here, received $4 million from solid waste fund. There was a transfer that was approved by council.
But that was in 2015. I'm looking at 2012, where...
Oh.
Where still, the green bar went up, even though the blue line was below the red line.
Right. It, it went up from zero, because that was when the fund was created.
Okay, so where did that money come from, if not from revenues in this fund?
Probably the sewer fund.
Okay, so that was a transfer from the sewer fund as an unrestricted cash transfer?
I, I don't know for sure, but I would assume that from a natural source.
Okay. I was just checking on that, because it seems the changes to the green bar reflect the difference in the blue bar and the red bar.
Yeah, that's right.
Except for right there. So that's why I was kind of curious as to the amount. Thanks.
Councilmember Hagge.
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, because it was the first, one of the first transfers I voted for, we moved and borrowed the storm fund, $2 million from the general fund in 2014. And then, we also, I think it was last year, we took $4 million from solid waste to storm rate to shore it up, so we could finish some of the projects that we knew we had to complete. So we put a lot of money in this, and there's still revenue being generated, that's why I don't, I don't think, see it going below the $4 million line. But again, until we can look at the capital projects that are proposed for 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2012, which is our responsibility to make sure that our city does grow, I'm not... I'm not, I won't support this until we can study it and know the facts. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to direct my colleague to our budget, where it lists every project for the stormwater program as well as all the others. They're all listed right there. Um, moving on, with respect to this, I want to provide a little history, and that's the fact that there's two of us up here who were here when we, uh, incepted this whole program, the storm drain program. And going back to that evening, it, it was a hard decision for me because the last thing I wanted to do was to create a, a, a fee program that would just be this behemoth thing. That's what I, my belief was at the time. But also part of that night, one of the decisions was, do we fully fund it? Remember that argument? Do we fully fund it day one? Or we just piecemeal it a little bit so everybody doesn't have the sticker shock and we can work it in? But we decided on the latter, which is what we've been doing. And I am just, since that date, I have been anxious to get us to that point where storm drain is fully funded, that we meet where the EPA is mandated. And I'll use a word that's been used tonight, it's irresponsible that we do not afford on this. The potential of a daily fee being imposed by the state and/or the federal government just because we're not increasing the fee to, to, to match the crews and the equipment that are required to move forward, that is irresponsible. Now, what we can do, once the crews are in place and we see where it's at, if we can reduce the rate because we can see the projection, then by all means, let's do it. Um, that, that's, that would be my, my stance tonight.
Councilmember Jacob?
I would agree with what, uh, Councilmember Nichols just mentioned. To me, this one is, is kind of another no-brainer. Uh, I think except for the one thing, government never reduces fees, come on. Oh, we have, never mind, except for this government, we do it. And I would support that, by the way, reducing fees, I like that idea. Uh, but in, in, in general, I, I agree with this one. Um, the only thing that gives me pause on this one is that even without the, the rate increases, the, the line of the reserves is going in a bad direction, but it's not going there as quickly as it is on some of the other ones. Um, so I would, I would be supportive of the, uh, increases as proposed, but I would also be supportive of an increase that may be a little bit less. For example, we have 12 and 16% in the two phases proposed. I would be supportive of, I would be supportive of that if that's the motion that's made, whether I make it or not, I have decided. But I would also be supportive of like a 9 and a 12, or maybe a 6 and an 8. Um, it would still draw down our reserves somewhat, but it's, it's, again, we can revisit it in a year or two years and look at it again. I'll still be here.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the only thing I would put out there is that I think it's probably appropriate to take our one increase now, but lumping both of them together, I think it would be better to discuss another subsequent increase for the next budget year at a later point in time. On the prior, where, uh, on, on the prior motion where we had, uh, the, the rates that were done back-to-back, uh, my guess is we probably would have had more support from the council if it's just the one, the one that was done. But for this one, um, I'm a little bit nervous about where we're at, and I will absolutely want to re, revisit it, find out if that second proposal is too much or too little. Um, I, I don't want to see them lumped together. So that's, that's the only thing I'll throw out there. Thank you.
I just want to state the obvious, that, uh, we could operate the, at the new level, the entire storm drain system for three years without any fees at all, let alone a fee increase. And even the chart shows that we don't go into the red till beyond 2020. And the only question I have again is, how much reserves do we need? This is one that's a no-brainer for me. We have beat this up for two solid years. Councilmember Jacob?
Uh, I'll, I'll agree with your last sentence there. We have beat this to death. Oh, no, not only just last two years, but the last six months. Uh, and in that vein, I will move, uh, to approve the first phase of the rate increase at 12% effective December 1st.
Having a motion by Councilmember Jacob, and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion of the motion.
Councilmember Burton? I will be voting the same way I did last time this came up, and I will be opposing this. And I would be happy to do this again in strategic planning to see what direction you want to go with these funds. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
In the hopes of avoiding a third day of strategic planning session, I vote yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
No.
Vote passes four to three.
Item eight D, discussion of possible action regarding solid waste rates. Steve?
Thank you. I'm here to answer questions.
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, this is the one we already, uh, passed with a 4.9% increase, so the only thing that's on the table now is the one for July 1st, so I would propose we move that to the planning session as well.
We also passed a storm drain fee that went into effect January 1st, so council needs to know that. Now we have a new one. Councilmember Jacob?
Uh, just one question on this one. The, uh, contract with ACE disposal, how does that figure into this? Uh, the, the current contract with ACE, the, uh, amended contract with ACE that was just recently, uh, tweaked? Um, and going forward, if this is, um, you know, how does this figure into, and there's been talk about bringing solid waste in-house, uh, putting it into its own, uh, city departments as far as that goes? How, how does that all play into either one of these increases, or either one of these proposals?
This proposal assumes we continue with an outside contract with the same dollar amount, with 2% increase per year, uh, which is allowed by contract, plus 2% population growth. So in other words, it does not include any very recent negotiations with ACE.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. This is the one that, uh, very least I could support since we contract all of the, um, solid waste removal, um, and we, we have a contract, I believe through 2017, so we can project the costs through that point in time. And this is a enterprise fund that should be break-even only since it's contracted at this time. So I would be supportive of any increase, since we should be looking at break-even on solid waste collection. Councilmember Nichols?
Actually, I have a motion if there's no other items.
That would be in order.
I would move that we tabled this item in the strategic plan, we can discuss it then.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion of the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Vote passes seven to zero.
Item eight E, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution 16-170, amending the uniform fee schedule for fiscal year 2016, 2017, updating the water, sewer, storm drain, solid waste, and impact fees. Bill, you have this item?
Uh, this is just updating the, uh, uniform fee schedule effective, uh, December 1st, 2016, for the items that were just listed, so.
Thank you. Questions from Bill? For Bill, Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. With the, uh, changes that we've made, uh, as far as adopting some of these fees, adopting parts of some of these fees, not adopting some of these fees, stabling some of these fees, do we need to look at a new fee schedule before we can approve this? Or can we approve this with the changes that has discussed already?
As long as you clarify exactly that that's what you're wanting to approve and nothing different, I'm making, uh, the request that the council clarify that in whatever motion it is that you are adopting as modified those items, the A, B, C, and D as passed and approved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I don't have so much as a question, as good no one's on the spot spot there. Just more, uh, a, a statement, maybe a little history, but looking at the impact fees, um, just a few years ago, um, it was discovered by the council that our impact fee structure was, as what was perceived at the time by the council, was erroneously awarding really big impact fees to multifamily, uh, residential housing. And so, the problem we were trying to tag in planning, which was, we wanted more single-family homes than multifamily homes, we were actually rewarding developers, uh, with having a lesser impact fee. The current impact fee structure addressed that by, um, essentially, uh, you know, within a, a relative, uh, amount of money, it, it put it back in balance, where there wasn't this, basically, a, a, a system that rewarded, uh, multifamily housing. So, the, the impact fees that are being presented tonight specifically with the single-family, multifamily, uh, residential, I would not be supportive of the new rate structure. Um, I like the way it is. I like the fact that, well, just to give an example, um, uh, on, on this particular packet item that's on page four, the top of the page, it says per meter and per acre fee details. Um, it's explaining here that we're basically putting it back in balance, we're putting it back to persons per housing unit. We're back, we're, we're setting our impact fees at a per basis, per person basis, rather than a per home basis or a per unit basis. And that's where I disagree. Uh, I would, I, I disagree with this line of thinking. I think what we're gonna do, where actually this decision, if we were impacted or pass these impact fees as presented, what we're gonna see is more multifamily housing, or more requests for it, and more requests for waivers, even though we've addressed a little bit of the planning as we move forward. I think that would be the side effect of this decision of passing it. So, for me, to support any kind of moving forward with the fee schedule as presented, I would want to leave the single-family and the multifamily impact fees as they are. And we could go through with the changes on the non-residential, I'm okay with that, but specifically with the single-family and multifamily. Just a comment.
I agree with Councilmember Nichols on that item, and I also believe that specifically the water, um, impact fee needs to be revisited by our consultant. So I will not be voting in favor of, uh, approving the impact fee portion. I would support approving the other fees as changed this evening. Councilmember Haga?
Again, this one, we make sure that we're, according to what I've read, when we ever, we've ever been given a fee increase or, you know, our schedule for our employees, we've always had to have a public hearing after we raise or after we change that structure. And this document right now has already been changed to where it's not really a valid document. Can we, that's sort of a leave of question. So we raised basically multifamily and commercial 22 cents. Can we pull out and say $18 and 24 cents? How do we do that so this, we can approve this document? Because this is not a document that we're approving. The uniform schedule of fees and service charges.
So your question is one of an esoteric nature, is whether or not we have given adequate notice as to what this document now represents, given the fact that the prior vote changed on items eight, um, A and eight C, correct?
Yeah, and if we can do that legally, we're, I'm okay with that.
The cleaner process would have that notice for two weeks, as required by state statute. Pull that out, allow that notice to go out because of those changes, and allow that change then to be adopted after the public notice and run.
I move to postpone, no, to table this item until two weeks, our meeting in two weeks, um, to vote on item eight E.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Roth, second by Councilmember Haga. Discussion of the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Um, no.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Vote fails three to four.
Councilmember Jacob?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, if I understood that right. I move to approve the changes to the fee schedule that were adopted during our discussions on items, uh, business items A through D, uh, but not approving the impact fee changes at this time.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob, and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion. I just have one question. Do you feel safe in, if this motion passes, in the notice time?
And the fees can be implemented immediately. The impact fees, because of the time period, will have to be delayed at least another two weeks for whenever they're finally approved.
But we're, we're not, under the motion, we wouldn't be putting any impact fee.
That's correct. That's my understanding. I should ask the council member to clarify that if I am wrong.
That's my understanding as well, thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Vote passes five to two.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I, if I may, I've got a couple of questions on the motion that just passed. Um, primarily regarding effective dates. Uh, we have, December 1st is the effective date for, for some fees, and then I believe the water piece rate wasn't going to happen until January 1st. Does it cause a problem having those fees with separate effective dates on the same fee schedule?
Can you tell me the dates again? Because I'm, I'm trying to work backwards in time.
I believe all of the dates for December 1st, with the exception of, uh, the water, for the commercial, industrial, and multifamily, and that particular rate was effective on January 1st. So, essentially, I, I think we've adopted a fee schedule that has a rate that's not yet.
So, essentially, I I think we've adopted a fee schedule that has a rate that's not yet effective.
Because it's, you you indicated in the previous motions, January one.
Correct.
So that's the effective date.
As I see it, uh, rate, uh, sheet that we approved, just has an effective date on it, right?
Thank you.
Item eight F, discussion of possible action regarding approval of resolution sixteen dash one seven one, accepting irrevocable resignation of City Councilmember Sophie Rice, effective November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, and noticing the appointment of a dist- of a District Four Councilmember to replace Councilmember Sophie Rice. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, at this point, uh, Councilmember Rice has effectively uh executed the irrevocable resignation letter. It'll be your choice tonight to accept that and start the process of setting a date uh of November sixteenth to select a new member. So as is indicated in the request from uh Council Action, I'd ask you to approve resolution sixteen dash one seven one, with the expo- with the additional um inclusion of the description as requested by the council of last meeting. We provided a two-page explanation that sets out the steps that you'll be implementing at council meeting one through basically nine, if there are more than four individuals that apply. That, that was previously sent to you, it is not in the packet, but by giving notice tonight, we can actually get it published in plenty of time, and actually up on the website, uh, post it on Facebook, put it other places, so people know and can anticipate what's gonna happen that night. Um, I have not heard from any of the members about uh whether or not there are changes, though, that you'd like to implement uh through that two-page packet I sent out. Um, if you'd like to talk to me privately, we'd still have plenty of time to get that to Ms. Briggs' office and get it published. So at this point, you'll just have to perhaps accept the resignation and set a date of uh picking a new person on the sixteenth, if you want to do that.
Councilmember Nichols.
Just ready for a motion, yeah?
That would be in order.
Um, a quick comment, I just wanted to refer it later to me, I wanted to thank Councilmember Rice for being a member of the council, for stepping up at a time, and uh, I had Councilmember Soaker sit down. Um, it's been a a fun two years, and I've enjoyed having you here, and really appreciate your hard work, and your effort on behalf of the city, a lot of hours on the phone and meetings, and the city is grateful to you for your service and your family for their sacrifice and knowing to be with us. With that, I move to approve resolution sixteen dash one seventy one, accepting Councilmember Rice's resignation as stated in the packet.
Second.
Would you add, uh, with the schedule as set for five, City Attorney, as well?
Affirmative, as stated.
As stated. Second, second. I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, and a second by Councilmember Jacob, discussion of the motion, Councilmember Rice.
I'm sorry, we're not, not because it's required, it's a little bit awkward to set my own reservation.
I just wish to make a statement, not uh comment, uh, I wish Councilmember Rice and her family all the best on the move.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hega.
Yes.
Mayor Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor, are we ready for our closing remarks?
Yes, beautiful.
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you to staff for the quick response, last time we uh spoke about advertising, also for the position that we have for the three openings for Planning Commission, and they are out there on the city's Facebook page, and uh, staff has been very responsive and quick to get that out, so, thank you.
And I, would, may I interrupt, Mayor, just as, I wanted to let you know, I want to thank Ms. Wells, she's been very helpful, she's gonna post on your marquee out front the notice for the next uh week, um, that anybody driving by will see a reference to an opening in District Four, and the availability will be online to fill out the paperwork. So we're gonna do everything we can to get as much information out there about the position.
Thank you. Yeah, the more. See you none, uh, I would entertain a motion to move to close session for the discussion and character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, strategy sessions to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of a water right or water share. I believe, uh, we can, we can just re-quit tonight.
So moved.
I have, I have a motion, uh, by Councilmember Jacob, and a second by Councilmember Burton, discussion of the motion. See you none, let's vote.
You said adjourn from there, is that right, right?
What's that?
You said adjourn from the close session, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Council, Mayor Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Hega.
Yes.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.